Whether it'll cost more to fix it than the building is worth.
You got money for a Phase One environmental assessment?
Yes, yes. And thank you for letting us use Beck Environmental.
If I could, I don't know if I can ask this or not, again, Mr. Kuntz, they stop us if we step off the line. You have a capital improvement fund. Do you have the figures on what you have in that now? Maybe Mr. Kolbarger would have that, being the town manager.
Lots of money. Top of my head, I can maybe cross.
More than a million dollars.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
In the opinion of perhaps the town board, would that be available for use should the remediation not be possible?
It's the town board money.
It's their money.
Town board money. Would it be fair to say then that the leadership on remediation or replacement would be under the leadership of the town board?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The town board just formed a task force to look at the options that we have within the development of either a new community center, an event center, or the repair and the rebuilding and improvements to the root center. I know that the community has their heart at the root center. That is, a public space that was just extremely missed when it had to be closed. Any public space like that is extremely important to any community. So, the more we can do together to get something to take its place or to repair it is very important. So, that task force was formed not only from the cooperation of the county and town to come and sit on it, but also to have citizens sit on it, also to bring their expertise, so that that can be looked at as what is it we would like to have, what could be dreamed about, what is possible. So with that, moving forward, we do hope that we can then move into some real concrete decisions into what can be done.
For the sake of familiarization, does the center generate income of any kind?
No. I know there's rentals that are asked of organizations sometimes, but just to use it. But most of the time, it's there for the community. It certainly is something that any community needs to have, which is a public space like that where you can have meetings. I mean, there's been dances there. We have our holiday dinners. And those events now are forced to find whatever is out there. And believe me, there's not much that is oftentimes big enough for the events that were held there. So, the community center, the root center, is really something that was, as far as capacity, met the needs back in sixty-something when it was built.
Four.
In sixty-four when it was built. But we have certainly outgrown it. So, it does need another look at it. And it takes some individuals willing to sit down and look at it, and certainly working with the county to see how we can develop into something that can grow. Because the expertise sometimes is not always within the town. And by bringing experts together or the expertise together, we can find some good solutions.
Would anyone on the town board like to discuss with the county commission how they can help the town put the center back together?
I have some comments about the center. I am not opposed to putting it back in operation, but I'm 100% opposed to that building representing the town of Perump's government any further. The government is a business, and that building represents the business of the town of Perump. And it's shameful. We've been trying to get business in this town. So, let's say we bring someone over prepared to invest millions of dollars in our community, and I bring them down to an old building. It just doesn't work. This town needs to change its image, and it needs to start so with a government center. We need a professional government center to represent the town of Perump. So, when we bring people in, we look successful. Because if you look like a failure, nobody wants to get involved. And it's time to move on and build a new building. I don't mind taking care of that one, bringing it up, and using it for some community functions as it has in the past. But I'm totally opposed to going on and thinking that that should represent the town of Perump, and we should hold our meetings there.
Anyone want to comment from?
Yeah, we, this building, when it was opened, was offered to the town to use back in July for all the meetings. Also, this is not anything new. Back, I believe it was '07, the county gave the town $75,000 because the roof was leaking at that time. I believe there's $73,900 of that left. Don't know why that can't be used to do these studies or move forward with it. And that's all.
Does anything come to mind from your perspective over here in the county, a way that you could really affect helping the town board with this project?
I think it's a little premature, because until Beck Environmental, you know, completes all of the paperwork and finds out exactly what needs to be done, and then it'll be up to the town board to decide which direction they want to go with that building, whether it be raise it, build a new one, a different one. And that will be a town board decision. So, I will support them on any way they want to go. But I think it's too premature to say what can the community do to help until we know what needs to be done and whatever funding may be available.
If I may?
You may.
Excuse me. If I may chime in on that. I believe that is the exact holdup, is that we are waiting on the engineers to tell us whether or not to continue with the root center or to tear it down. Or, right now, it's in the hands of the engineers. So, as far as the two entities working together to do something, we can both prod the engineers.
Is there a timeline when that might be possible to have that report?
Mike, who's doing that for you, Nino and Moore? Who are the environmental engineers who are doing the assessment of the building?
Just a moment. Do you have that?
Is it Nino and Moore?
I don't think so.
It's, Beck is, Beck is not doing it, but they're contracting with.
No, they're not doing it, right.
Right. They contract, I think it is, with Nino and Moore.
With Nino and Moore?
Right.
I am intimately familiar with Phase One environmental assessments, and unfortunately, they take as long as they take, because they're going to be looking for potentially hazardous materials like asbestos. Yeah, you know, yeah, things like that. So, unfortunately, it takes as long as it takes.
If I may, Mr. Kolbarger actually applied for this grant back in December. It was started prior to the leak in the roof. So, this has been going on since December, and we're just getting to the point where this week we got approval. So, like you said, it's going to take as long as they decide it's going to take, because it's their money and they're doing it. So, it's their timeline.
No, the thing is that you want them to be as comprehensive as possible in their analysis of that building. You don't want them to just walk in and say, "Yeah, we think if you patch the roof, you'll be good to go." You want them to check for things like asbestos and any other contaminants that are in the building.
Yeah, I understand they're going to be looking for mercury from the lights and lead paint and who knows what else. Oh, there's mold in there, a lot of mold.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
And also that they will do an assessment of, is it feasible to tear it down and build a new one? Or try to build over what you have? Because anytime we found that out with the old building here at the Calvada Eye, when we tried to renovate it, it costs twice as much as a new building. So, there'll be factors in there that, and then you, as the town board, obviously, need to be looking into the future of what size building you would need. Would you want to make it a little bigger, things like that? I would hope that you'd do that.
Commissioners, you were stating too, we've given all the information as to what we're waiting for and why we're waiting. But at the same time, we also mentioned the fact that we do have a task force that we've put together. And once everything is done, then we'll look at the task force to talk about exactly the things you just mentioned.
But, if I may. But certainly, in the meantime, the task force, which consists of, and is having an invitation to go to a county commissioners to sit on it, two town board members, and citizens that would like to apply and sit on it. They can be looking at those options. They can be developing workshops to really look at what is out there as far as the desire of the community for another community center or an event center. I mean, when you go around and visit other communities and see how diverse there, that we have public buildings, we can have a number of different styles. It can do a number of different things. It can have stages. It can have separate meeting rooms. Certainly, those things can be considered in the interim until we get all the reports back.
Well, like I said, for me, the root center is simply a matter of if it's feasible to put it back together, but I don't want to continue using it. The county's major investments in our community have been pushing a prison down our throat, something I consider a negative thing to our community. And without discussing it with the town, they decided to build a 300-bed jail. By the way, Carson City has a 200-bed jail. Obviously, it's not for just serving the needs of this community, but some other plan. And in my mind, we need something to kind of counter those negative things. And like I said, this town needs a modern government center that reflects that when people look at it, that we look successful here. And fixing the root center, going on as business as usual, is not going to affect that. What people are going to see when they come to town is an old rundown building representing the town and a bunch of places to lock prisoners up. And that's not what I moved here for. I don't think anybody moved here for. The town of Perump is an unincorporated town. And I think what's happened is, in the past, is that the county has kind of looked at that we have the ability to manage our own future and do things, and it kind of ignored us. But unfortunately, we don't have much legal say-so over much, other than parts in a wreck and a couple other things, a cemetery and so on. And we've been ignored by the county. Go up to Beatty and look at their nice community center. And some of you people here haven't seen it. You should go take a look. And the answer would be, "Oh, well, the town of Beatty did it." Where did they get the money? It all comes from the county. We need to be treated more fairly.
Speaking as that area's representative, I can tell you that not very much of that money came from Nye County. We did contribute somewhat to that building. Gary, I think since you've been on the board, we purchased the curtains for the stage and the sound system and might have given them $100,000 or $200,000 towards the construction of that building. But what you're forgetting, Mr. Culkin, is that the Beatty Bullfrog Mine was right outside of the town of Beatty. They paid a tremendous amount in property taxes and in net proceeds taxes. My hat is absolutely off to the members of that town board for having the foresight to save that money over the years and budget it, and with a sense of vision. They planned that community center, and they built that themselves, whether you want to believe that or not. That's the truth.
Incredibly, I must interrupt. I am reminded that, a couple of things here. We have to maintain a level of courtesy to each other with dignity and respect.
I called him Mr. Culkin.
I don't find anything.
We could have a lot more fun if we didn't have to observe the rules, folks.
But a level of courtesy and respect.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rainey. And Mr. Culkin, the only other thing I would say is that the board, the governing board there, which is an advisory board, they had substantial carryovers from year to year that they budgeted for long-term capital investment. That's what they did.
Part of the problem is, as an example, the town of Perump receives a little over $600,000 a year returned for sales tax, and yet Beatty and Tonopah receive over half that much. And so, they have about 1,000 people each, and we got well over 30,000 each. We're not getting our fair share. So, there's a lot more to the story of how these other communities are able to come up with money that Perump can't. And like I said, the commissioners need to work with us more. That's the bottom line.
Let me talk again. Let me address that, Mr. Culkin, specifically as it relates to Beatty and Tonopah, because those are two areas in my district, very successful communities, as you've pointed out, by the amount of sales tax that they bring in. Highway 95 runs right through the middle of Beatty and right through the middle of Tonopah. One cannot travel from Reno to Vegas or from Vegas to Reno without going through those two communities. There are 10 hotel and RV parks in the Beatty community. They have a number of restaurants, some small businesses, and gas stations with mini-marts. I have never been through that community, that I have not seen every single one of those parking lots full. And what that translates to is consolidated tax from the gas, from the sales there. And of course, they're going to get a lot of room tax. They have, as I said, 10 hotels and RV parks there. And they do get a lot of room tax. That's absolutely true. But contrary to what you believe, the state of Nevada or the Department of Taxation is not cheating anybody out of any tax revenue. This is a formulaic process. They apply the formula on seat tax evenly across the state of Nevada, and Beatty and Tonopah get what they get.
I would find it hard to believe that we have a Walmart, a Home Depot. We have numerous new car dealerships, and we have an awful lot more business in the towns you mentioned, and a lot more going on. And yet, you're saying that they generate a little more over half the sales taxes. Perump, no way in the world. It's something that's been.
Mr. Rainey, we need to move away from this conversation, so we have about one minute. We'd like to wrap this up.
All right. I'd like to point out, you want to know how the county can help you? I would say that the town of Perump, right now, in your capital projects fund, you have $1.3 million. In your special capital projects fund, you have $170,000. That is certainly some pretty significant seed money for you to move ahead and make some plans for either the renovation of your current community center or for the construction of a new one. We would like nothing better if you constructed a new one, to do it right here at the Calvada Eye, so that all of government functions are together.
Just to clarify, the funds that you just mentioned are in addition to what Mr. Kolbarger said that?
No, I took them right off the December 31st, the end-of-year treasurer's report from Mr. Maher. I'm looking.
My point was, are they in addition to what was represented, or are those the same funds?
Yeah, they're the same funds.
And there's also the balance of the $75,000 to fix the roof.
And, by the way, they can build the same building that's here. This building costs $1.8 million.
Mr. Moderator, I don't think that funds are really the issues that we should be addressing. Because I think if, in my experience, if we build it, they will come. And the funds will generate from the need and also from the definition of what is going to be built. So, as far as that goes, I believe that with the leadership of the town board, as in any other community, we can have a community center. We can have a public space. We can do a government center. There's many things we can look to do if we sit down and do the planning to accomplish it. And certainly, with the cooperation and the help and the encouragement from the county to help us develop what needs to be done, that's where working together will get it there.
I think what we're all hoping for is that tonight's meeting would be a point of the beginning for even deeper discussions between the town board and the county commission. And I would hope that this type of discussion on this particular subject would continue to move forward after we leave this meeting this evening.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to add too, that with the large population of people that we have in Perump, which is a large part of Nye County, what's good for Perump is good for Nye County. And so, I know the commissioners are willing to work with us to make these things happen.
I'm sure they are. Moving on, let's have a little discussion now on how can the county and town partner to work with the Nye County School Board of Trustees to encourage parents and students to consider education a valuable asset? Well, obviously, education is a valuable asset. I am uncertain of this particular item, how to begin a discussion on that. Would someone like to jump in on it?
May I, please? That was one that I really felt was important, because so much is tied in to economic development that is fostered by education. We certainly don't have jurisdiction or authority as a county, board of commission, or as a town board. But we all serve the same citizens. We all have the same desire to have growth and sustainability. And certainly, without the foundation of education in our communities, we have the challenge of how do we get a sustainable workforce moving down into, or moving through, the 21st century? So, we have our challenges in the state, and we certainly need to work together to see how we can overcome whatever will be coming at us as we move forward into the 21st century. Do we become complacent and not address the fact that we might be losing our community college here? Do we become complacent and don't address the fact that we are going, we are closing schools here in Perump? What do we do to overcome that? And I know I sit with not only Mr. Rainey, but many other people that are concerned about that, to look at what we can do as a community. We certainly can't impact the state and their budgets and how they're going to allocate funds to education. But what can we do to be proactive and look at what is needed so that we can have economic development? We can have a workforce here.
Carolyn, I just want to point out that one of the statements that you made is that you cannot, that you don't have any influence on the state, but you do. We spend, I think all of the commissioners have spent time going up and talking to the legislators about their budget, about the effects of the bills that they have in front of the legislature, and how they affect Nye County. It would be wonderful to see you up there as well.
Yes, and I do communicate on a regular basis as a citizen. And certainly, as a town board member, I encourage whatever is beneficial. I completely agree. But what I'm saying, as far as we don't have power, we do have influence, but we don't have the ability to necessarily bring the money in to make sure that our schools are funded and our education system does have the adequate sustainability that it will need to keep growing.
And I believe that all of us could attend the school board meetings. It would be very helpful. There's nothing precluding us from doing that. There is, I'm sure we could all come up with some creative ideas on how they can get additional funding. Some areas, and I was going to bring this in front of the, I was going to wait until the new director came in, but bring in front of the board an idea of possibly trying to do some advertising on the school buses. Maybe just on the back end or someplace where it's not going to distract people. They do that in other communities, and it's a source of revenue. The state controls the funding to the school board. We don't. It goes directly to them. So, and it's not excused by any means, but all of us could be more active. I know we all have many subcommittees and liaison positions and charity events. I work with a couple of you in a lot of those. But it's difficult to try to do everything, but if we all put a little more effort into it, maybe we can get more involved and try to help them come up with some ideas.
Mr. Moderator, one of the things that I was told right after I got elected to the town board was, you've got to remember, education is not your responsibility. It's not the commissioner's responsibility. But we do have to look at the importance of education. And I think if we continue to focus on it to, as parents, as citizens, as members of the commission, as members of the town board, and let people know just how important education is. Ms. Endersby hit the nail on the head when she said that. But we've got to continue to say that and let parents know that we're concerned about it. I know I attend as many of the school board meetings as I can, but they schedule them at the same time as the town board meetings. And so, we're not able to attend as many as I'd like to. But when they don't conflict with the town board, I do attend those meetings. And I think it's important that they see us. They see us as elected officials at their meetings. Parents need to see that, and they need to know that we know it's important.
I might add at this point that my wife is a very bright lady, and she made the profound statement that I am quite a handsome man. And I know it's hard to take your eyes off of me, but would you please speak to each other rather than your moderator?
Moderator. A couple of years ago, I read a story about a county in another state that had about the worst level of education. And they wanted to change their county and make it a prosperous place. So, they decided to invest in education. And after they got done doing so, it took them a few years, they became known for having the best level of education in the state. And they couldn't keep business of someone out. Dr. Roberts, in my opinion, was a tremendous superintendent, and I was sad to see him retire. I recall not too long ago, he came to your board and asked you for money to invest in the students, and he was turned down. When I read this here, it's saying to encourage parents and students to consider education a valuable asset, I don't think that's who we have to convince. I think we have to convince the people that have the money to help the education happen.
If I could speak to that. The issue, the term "invest" is used pretty broadly. And that particular instance had a lot around it. It wasn't that we weren't willing to help out. And I wasn't on the board at the time then either. But it comes back to the same thing. I'm not going to use names, because we're not supposed to use names. But again, it's the demonization, somehow the county's cheating the town out of tax revenue, and now the county doesn't want to help with school board, the schools. It's real tough to, you know, how is this facilitating dialogue? How is this helping out?
I'll answer that question, Mr. Moderator. Last year, the town board was wrestling with the idea to recognize that we're an economically challenged community. They didn't want to admit that. But I encourage that they did so, because when we're willing to step up to the plate and recognize something, then we can move on and fix it. If we're not going to admit things, we're not going to get anywhere. I'm just trying to point out facts of things that have happened. When I use the word "investment," I believe that the town board, the county commissioners, all of our elected officials, we are the investors of taxpayers' money. They want a quality return. I've been here 17 years, and I don't see a return happening the way it should have been. We're going from bad to worse here. And I have a question in to the county manager, and I hope I get the answer. Where has all that pet money been spent? As long as I've been here, what, $11 million a year, 17 years, $187 million? And it was here before I got here. I've been everywhere, round mountain, all over place, and frankly, I don't see it anywhere. The money, it appears, might have been spent to support the county's functions. It should have been spent, and a matter of they got a residual payback. We spend money on something, and now it pays us money. If we spend money on education, as an example, we educate people. They don't go on welfare. They become assets to our society, not a liability. That's what I'm talking about when I say an asset. We have to recognize our mistakes. And when we do, then we know what we need to do to fix it. Just like when I come fix your air conditioner. I can't fix it until I figure out what's wrong with it. It's really simple. I'm not trying to be adversarial here. I'm just trying to say what's, I know it's coming out that way. But we don't have the power. We don't have the money. You guys got it all. You know, we wanted to take over planning and zoning, because we wanted to, tired of the town, the county, you know, it's a tail wagging the dog, right? 83% of the population is told what to do by the county commissioner. We need to be in charge of our own destiny.
Can we stay on the topic of education, please?
I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I ask this question? What was the intent of posing this question? Did somebody have some concrete ideas on how we can better help students and parents realize it's, you know, valuable asset? I think many do. And so, I don't want to go back to the same argument. It's just, you just don't throw money at something if it ain't working. So, I mean, if you have trouble with it, you don't just throw more money at it. So, who asked the question, or if you don't want to say who did it, can somebody tell me why? What was, what would you like us to do to help you get with this? And I don't see this constantly, you guys got this and you guys got that. I'm elected to represent District 5. I'm elected to represent District Five, which is all in Perump, the south part of Perump.
Let me say this.
I don't feel it's us and them. I represent Perump.
Let me say this, I did not put the question on here, but I believe, and I haven't, I haven't queried anybody else of the commissioners or the town board to see if anybody else was a school administrator or a teacher. And I've been both. And I looked at this question, and I wondered the same thing. But as I said, I think we need to continue to emphasize how important education is to parents and everybody else. And as long as they feel that we consider it important, they may consider it important. But if we don't say anything about it at our meetings, then the importance goes away.
Thank you.
So whoever put it on, I'm glad they did, because at least we're talking about it.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'd be glad to work with any of you on that issue. I realize the value of education and how important it is. And there's nothing, we're not going to make any decisions tonight on that anyway, so if any of you want to, want me to work with you on that, I'd be glad to do it.
Yes, and I know that there's communities that work diligently on how they can service and provide programming for the youth in their communities. It doesn't have to be through the educational system. It can be definitely community-based programs, after-school programs. If we're losing certain abilities within our education system, whether it's arts or music, some of the programming that we all grew up with and was provided through the educational system, we could do that as a community by providing grants that would fund those special programs. There is an after-school program effort going on, and certainly, we can all work on that. I'm just going to end with just making this statement, because I think this is so key. President Reagan remarked that each generation goes further than the generation preceding it because it stands on the shoulders of that generation. Youth will have opportunities beyond anything we've ever known. But if we're not here for our families and our youth, and trying to work together on providing what it is that's lacking in our communities, then we have failed as leaders.
I think we've addressed the importance of it. I think the question, though, remains, how can the town of Perump and the county commission work together to educate and join the parents to do the same on the importance of education?
Well, I believe I've just made the offer to the other side of the table to do that and work with any of them. And just a little footnote, when the school board asked for help, I brought up two agenda items. The problem was that we didn't have any funding available that could qualify for that. We could give them books and infrastructure, but we could not give them salaries and benefits. And that's where they needed the money, so. So just so everybody's aware that we were asked the help, we did try, and it just, you couldn't, there was no funding available to do it with.
And there's another figure, in '07, we gave seven, this, the board, the county gave $750,000 to Great Basin College. And I'm sure we can find other figures more recently, but there is money that's been given, and that was for Perump, Great Basin College, in Perump. So not being totally ignored.
Mr. Moderator, if I could just respond to some, this has nothing to do with the question, but Mr. Culkin stated that he had asked for information from the county manager, and it was not forthcoming. You never asked me for information about pet funds. You visited my office, you asked me for information about the properties that were coming up for sale on the tax bill, and the next day, I had you a report with the printouts. You never asked me for that. And I'll be happy to supply you with all kinds of data on where pet funds have been spent over the years. It's all in the records.
Moving on, please.
If I could address that, please.
We'd like to stay on topic. Thank you.
Anything further on the subject at hand? All right. The next point of discussion are, two studies have been made available to the public regarding incorporation of the town of Perump. Why not put that on the ballot for a public vote?
I can address that. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to read from the minutes of the January 18th, 2011 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, minutes that we're going to approve, hopefully tomorrow. This was an action item, discussion deliberation and possible decision on placing an advisory question on the November 2012 general election ballot, should have been there also, asking the voters of the town of Perump whether they wish the town of Perump to be incorporated. And I read from those minutes. District Attorney Brian Coonsy stated that upon examination, it was his feeling that the commissioners could put something on an advisory question that fell within their consideration. He stated that this board had no authority to deal with the incorporation issue, so therefore, there was no statutory authority for them to put this on the ballot as an advisory question. Mr. Coonsy stated that there was a lot of material that needed to go into that question, including preparing the statements that went into the question. He stated that his question to the board would be, if they were going to be sponsoring this question, who would be doing the studies and preparing questions and issues with regard to the financial impact of an incorporation? Mr. Coonsy stated that the town board did not create the incorporation issue either. If people wanted to have an advisory question, there was a referendum procedure to handle it. The town board had no greater authority to issue an advisory question than the Board of County Commissioners did. Commissioner Shinhofen commented that the best way was for the people to gather names on a petition and approach the clerk with that petition. Mr. Coonsy read the statute regarding the matter. Mr. Coonsy stated that it was his opinion that this board should not sponsor this. Mr. Coonsy, as you know, is our legal counsel, and we felt then, as I do now, that that was the end of it.
Anyone like to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I feel that too many times, the agitancy of an issue comes at hand, and not really what's right or wrong. If the county commission had upon itself decided to put an item on their, on the ballot, their vote on it for incorporating the town of Perump, I think that would be inappropriate. But an elected body of people, even though I wasn't for incorporation at that time, I still recognize that an elected body of people voted to ask the county commissioners to put something on a ballot. That's proper chain of command, proper procedure. And I think that the county commission should have done so. Simply an advisory question, anyway. But so basically, what I'm seeing here is that we can vote on anything we want, and we want to have it put on a ballot, and it's not going to happen. You know, I've been around the block once or twice when it comes to the legal arena, and I know as well as most people that's been in that arena knows, if I want to support something, I'll find a law to do it. If I don't, I'll find a law as well. And one of the things, it's one of my pet peeves is, I don't pay for legal opinion, so to speak, or feelings. I want to see the law. And indeed, when I've talked to Mr. Kolbarger, and I say I want to get an opinion from our attorney about that, I want the law cited. I don't want just someone saying, well, I feel it's this way or that. I don't pay for that.
Mr. Coonsy, was that your feeling? Is that what your feeling was? Or was that an opinion, a legal opinion that you gave this board?
Actually, I think you already read it in the minutes. I actually read the statute specifically.
Exactly.
As a layperson, not involved in the legislation, the ins and outs of the mechanics of getting this done, but me as the moderator ask this body, what is the proper procedure for getting to incorporation? How does this start, and what path does it follow?
Well, it's clear cut that it was stated in that meeting that if the people that want incorporation, whoever the people are, whether it's the town board or the people out there or the people not here, go out and get the 1,800 signatures, and then it can get put on the ballot. Clean, simple. There are people in this community that want it, and there are others who definitely don't. And it should be the will of the people, and it should go on the ballot. So I would think the people that are so enthused about incorporation that they think it's going to solve all of our problems, that they would go out and get the 1,800 signatures and put it on the ballot. Our DA's said that it's not within our purview to do that. I fear that if the county commission did do that, that the town could turn around and start pointing fingers at us saying, "We forced it upon you." Well, we don't want to force it on anybody. It's the town of Perump to decide. Whoever wants this incorporation, go out and get the signatures. 1,800, it's not that many to get.
Why can't, why can't we have 39 signatures?
Why don't you ask the state legislature?
Mr. Mediator, Mr. Mediator, in the interest of civil, being civil, this is turning into a bickering session, in my opinion.
We haven't had a chance to speak over here.
I didn't really see it that way. I thought that this was just a lively conversation.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, I'm wondering if I do anything right. I really am.
I'd like to, I'd like to repeat that one of our goals tonight is to reach a balance and open communication that we have not had in the past. So maybe we need to each individually rein in our passion and try and address this as an open line of communication, perhaps say, "I feel," or "I think," and not necessarily...
Well, and again, moderators, when people start their own cheap shots, you should open your mouth a little bit and say something. I gave the town board an easy way to do that. I'm not going to go out and help you do it. That's one thing I'm not going to do. Get the 1,800 signatures. That's the way we were told from Mr. Coonsy, the way to go. And put it on the ballot. What's the big deal? The town, the town can do that with the 1,800 signatures.
When they voted in 2000, I'm told they didn't gather any signatures. The county put it on the ballot. Now...
Vicki, I'm sorry, with all due respect, none of us were on the board in the year 2000.
I know that.
And Mr. Coonsy was not, I'm sorry, and Mr. Coonsy was not our district attorney. Obviously, there was legal advice that came from another district attorney that is different from what we are getting from our council right now. We follow the advice of council.
I'd like to add something on that, and I wanted to say it earlier. I agree with Mr. Coonsy, when he read the information, it takes a grassroots organization, and we can have a grassroots organization within the town to do that, if the town really wants it on the ballot. We understand that. In the past, and I was going to say what Ms. Parker said, in the past, items were placed on the ballot without following that procedure. Just because it was wrong then don't mean that we need to ignore what the law says now. And the fact that Mr. Coonsy said it, I feel that's where we are. Again, I know I put a blog together, and I said, if there's, if there's anybody that's interested in having it on the ballot, let's start a grassroots organization, and let's get the signatures. It's easy to do, it needs to be done. I don't think we need to say, let's ignore the law or anything else. Let's follow the procedures. Mr. Coonsy is our DA, not just the county DA. He is our DA. We need to listen to what he's saying. Follow the law, get the signatures if you want it. If you don't get the signatures, it's not going to happen. That's the end of that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Does this panel believe, both sides of this panel believe, that the public is sufficiently aware of what the advantages to them and the disadvantages to them would be under incorporation?
Mr. Moderator, if I may. The answer to that is, I don't believe so. We have this ongoing debate, which is, there's nothing wrong with citizens having a debate on a discussion and having various points of view, but certainly, facts are where decisions need to be made. We can talk and throw out whatever it is that comes from our emotional base as a reaction, but when you have the facts in front of you, it changes oftentimes the whole decision-making. It's no longer a perception, it's based on a subjective decision. So with that, I need to really commend the previous incorporation advisory board for their efforts to move that question into the public arena, into research, into the ability to really look at it. And the present incorporation advisory board is doing the same. So there's effort to make clarification as to what the financial issues are, what the ramifications are, how to do it. So that will come forward, but certainly, to put it on a ballot without that information is probably going to defeat any ability to look at it subjectively.
Mr. Moderator, the question was, was, the question that to be put on the ballot wasn't whether or not the town would incorporate, simply is how you felt about it. And speaking of facts, how should I, as a town board member, feel about this? As I said, an elected body of people followed a chain of command and asked the county commissioners to do something, and they refused. But when 39 people wanted to dissolve the town board, which I would consider, you know, somewhat of an important issue, it wasn't like, will we get some more seats for the senator here or something? Now, 39 people, oh, that's credible, let's have a big hearing about the town board. How am I supposed to feel? Am I supposed to feel that the town of Perump is treated fairly, under those circumstances? I don't feel that.
Mr. Moderator, may I have the floor?
You may.
Mr. Culkin, I am one of those commissioners who voted to have that public hearing where the 39 signatures came forward. And I voted for that for one reason and one reason only, because it was another opportunity for all of us to be in the same room again. If people wanted to talk, that's what I wanted to hear.
And Mr. Moderator, if I may have the floor for a moment. One person came in and asked the town board about splitting the county, or dividing the line, or moving the line, or whatever you want to call it, and you jumped all over that. So maybe we need three items on the ballot. One about splitting the county, I'm on my turn. You can go next, okay? One of them would be for incorporation, I would really like the people of Perump to have the opportunity to vote it up or down, as long, and I'd like to see it really, if it goes forward, that the, all of the facts are put out there so everybody can make an informed decision. One to do away with the town board, and one to split the county line. I mean, to be fair, if one person, 39 people, or 1,800 people asked for it, and it was just to, just to bring it up and have it in the meeting, so.
Mr. Moderator, something wonderful going on here, in case you haven't noticed, because as contentious as this point is, there were smiles on both sides.
We're having a good time.
Your moderator appreciates that because I brought my Kevlar vest tonight.
I just wanted to point out that I asked Mr. Garlo to come forward. I wanted that item to move forward.
Harley, I know.
Mr. Garlo and I have discussed it over many years, and he's been involved in it. And I felt it was appropriate to move forward with that. And so I asked him if he would mind, wouldn't mind bringing it forward, and I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, we're playing, we're just playing a tit for tat here on numbers, so we're all the way down to one now, so let's, let's move on.
Let's make it number four. Now they want to redistrict us.
Wait a minute, I want to know if anybody's keeping score out there. Which side's doing better?
Not only do we want to split the county...
None of us should leave here with any ill feelings. I mean, the reason to have this meeting was to have an open discussion, let the public sit in. I wish there was more folks here, but unfortunately, there's not. But, you know, again, I've had an open commitment to the town board, whoever it is, doesn't matter to me, to work with you all on trying to resolve some of these issues. And unless we talk to each other, we're not going anywhere, because, you know, we can't get it out. We all have to be willing, all of us, including you, Mr. Darby, and Mr. Hollis, Commissioner Hollis up there. We all need to be willing to talk to each other about these issues and get it off our chest. So, and we're doing it here, but we can also do it, and we don't have to be in this room. Well, not as, not as boards, but as individuals.
I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Rainey, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Could I, Mr. Rainey, just, Carolyn, if your town advisory board that you have for incorporation, if they want to sit down with me or want me to come to one of their meetings, I can outline detail what the requirements are for incorporation. And, you know, it's a fairly detailed process, and I'd be more than happy to work with the town advisory board that you have to go through all of the requirements that it takes to do incorporation. And again, just to explain that, when you're asking the county commissioners to vote, yes, you know, have an advisory question, it really is asking them to take something that they can take action on. And they can't take action on an advisory question until you go through a whole series of events. And some of it is very detailed with regards to getting information from the Department of Taxation with regards to the economic feasibility. But it all starts with, you know, having a petition signed by one-third of the, and I don't know what that number is, but it's one-third of the registered... but it's one-third of the registered people in whatever the city size is going to be. You know, and until you get that threshold, basically, from the people asking for that petition to be done, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to, to have an advisory question. But again, I will be more than happy to work with your group, explain the process of how to do a organization with regards to incorporation, as far as the mechanics of the procedure, if that will help facilitate moving this issue forward.
Absolutely, and that's much appreciated that you've made that offer. The, the advisory board is newly formed from the previous advisory board that worked very hard for a number of years. So with the new effort, with new eyes to look at it, that information is going to be invaluable. But certainly, the whole issues, all the issues that have been talked about right now, whether there should be a town board, whether the, it should be an incorporated municipality, whether the county has, needs to be divided. I've researched resolutions that go back decades, and those questions have come up on a regular basis. If, if we keep rolling it down the road and not addressing it, it will only keep inflaming emotions, because we won't have the facts to really decide. So I think it is an important time for all of us to look at the facts, bring them forward, help each other to really decide what it is that needs to go out into the public forum so that people can hear what it is that they need to hear.
Mr. Moderator. And it, I don't see us kicking it down. It's been voted three times on already, at least. Your last incorporation board did not come out with a finding to incorporate. Correct me if I'm wrong. They didn't come out with a finding one way or the other, did they?
They were instructed not to come back with a finding, just to bring out the facts.
Incorporation advisory board isn't there to make a decision. It's there to bring out the options.
What did it advise you, then? I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's there to bring out the options, to show the public, because the public, as Mr. Coonsy said, are the ones that have to decide. But if they're not given the information to really, again, make the accurate choice that they might have, pro or con, then we're not doing our part in, in making sure our citizens are informed.
And I agree.
Mr. Moderator.
The way to do that is to have the votes. I mean, get a petition, put it on the ballot.
What did you say question number six was? The question? Two studies have been made available to the public regarding incorporation.
Number six, sir, number six.
Number, number five, we're not on number six yet.
We aren't on number six yet.
I think that's what he's making a point.
Okay.
That's called facetious.
I think he wants you to move on to number six.
Move on. I see.
We can move on.
That was a cattle prod.
Zap.
All right. Can we, county and town, entice new business? How can we entice new business into Perump? Another timely subject.
Well, I'd like to lead off with that one, because I, I believe we're already, Mr. Kolbarger sits in with Mr. Osborne and others in the community back environmental, has regular meetings on this. In the past, I think some of the problems have been that the, the town and the county weren't really working together towards that. I believe we have a good start on it now. I believe that we, as commissioners, and you, as town board people, need to keep pushing to get more and more involved, to, to, when we get the businesses to come in, to make sure they go through the system properly. There has been changes in planning, public works, in, in, in other county functions. We have some people in the planning department right now that are, they're waiting with open arms. And, again, with Mr. Kolbarger and Mr. Osborne having regular meetings with others to try to move forward on economic development, it's not an easy thing to do. There's not a real market out there now for anybody that wants to come flying into Perump and start a factory or something. Our, our, we have some setbacks here. We don't have the infrastructure to offer. We don't have the land to offer. Other communities do, and they're successful. So I, I believe we're going in a good direction, but we all keep, need to put a little more effort into it. We've, both sides have asked BLM for disposable land, to try to get some kind of industrial park or something in here that would spark that. We've, on the county side, have asked for a energy corridor down through Sandy Valley, which would also open up a lot of transmission lines, possible road, gas, the things we don't have. So I just think we all need to put a little more effort into it and, and try to work together. We don't have to hold hands and go kumbaya or any of that stuff. But, but I do think there, there has to be a willingness by all parties to do it. And, and to sit and bicker and argue about things doesn't get us anywhere, so. And I'm not pointing fingers or looking at any one individual, but, again, I, I've been very open to the town board to work with any of you at any time about whatever issues you want to work on, so.
Mr. Moderator.
It's up to you.
Mr. Moderator, this... I, I'd just like to add, and like to piggyback on what Commissioner Pareski is saying. He's absolutely right on that. What we, we need to do is somehow change the, the atmosphere and the attitude of our town. Right now, when people look at the town of Perump, they see a lot of negativity. And we've got to somehow change that image, because there are a lot of positive things that are happening.
That's right.
The commissioners and the town board is working together. I would say every commissioner is working with somebody on the town board. Every town board member is working with at least one commissioner. So there are things that are happening in the background that may or may not have happened in the past. That I can't say for sure, but I do see a positive attitude coming. But we've got to somehow translate that positive, positive attitude so that everybody can see. When they think Perump, they can think positive. When you talk about bringing businesses here, that's what they want. They want a positive place to come. That can be us.
Mr. Moderator, can we, can we take a short break? Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Susan, we're, we're getting back to order, Susan. We're in the middle of a discussion. Yes, it is.
Order. I'll have surprise.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Osborne.
Thank you. We were talking about economic development, and I wanted to bring some things to light that people may not be aware of. We are making a lot of changes. There have been quite a few changes made in planning, public works. One of the more recent ones is three-two-one. One of the things that there have been complaints about is the turnaround time when plans get submitted, the planning and everything. So we worked through that, identified the problem, worked through it. And now, it was just recently approved for three-two-one, three weeks first time through, two weeks second time through, one week third time through, which is trying to streamline the process a little bit. We also, I created an ad hoc committee. And it's an informal committee that I use, made up of town manager sits on it, other professional people from construction industry that help me identify the problems that they've had issues with bringing projects, you know, through the hoops that everybody has to jump through. So when we find an issue that everybody thinks is, is creating problems slowing down the process, what we're trying to do is find solutions to that. And then I take them back to either the RPC through planning, back to the board to get them fixed. And, and we are doing that. Three-two-one was, was one example. We have implemented a pre-construction meeting that is an effort to try and make things move a little smoother. And we've done that with the Maverick store that's being constructed down at Homestead and 160. We call all the players in a room, planning and public works and community development, and everybody that has any role whatsoever. And we find out from the, from the project manager, what is the issues that you're having. And then we get answers while they're sitting there in a meeting. So in, in an hour or two, we're able to, to resolve most of their issues. And, and I want to add too, that I'm meeting, well, I shouldn't say I'm meeting. Some of my people are meeting this week with a national chain that is going to come here to Perump. Bill's going to be sitting in that meeting. It's, it's a Denny's. I've been waiting on a Denny's to come here. And this guy is, is going to bring the project here, and he's very interested in bringing it down there in the old Hollywood Video Store. So I think this is a win-win for everybody, and I'm real excited about it. We're going to do the same thing with him. We're going to bring everybody in a room. I've invited in VEA and UICN. So that everybody that is going to have any part whatsoever to play with, Denny's becoming a reality here, we're going to be in a room and hopefully, we'll be able to answer every question that he, his architect, or construction staff will have. So are we working together? Absolutely, we are. Are we making progress? Yeah. Is it fast enough? No. But we are working towards it, and, and Bill and I are, are working pretty well together. And Bill, you had a couple of things you wanted to throw in that we're doing.
Oh, when we get a little bit further on in the planning process, and where we feel that we're at that good stage, Mr. Osborne and I talked about actually making a road trip to go talk to the site selectors of the seven western states. And site selectors are individuals that work for large companies and find exactly what they're called, site selectors. They come out and find sites. So Mr. Osborne and I want to go meet with them and put the shingle out that we're open for business and share with them that we have restructured everything, that we have looked at all the other avenues, and we are trying to be extremely business-friendly and to please consider Perump. So, and not only Perump, but Nye County. So we are working together. We are going to do that. And that's one of the positive aspects that we can handle. Go out, put the shingle out. We're open for business. Come and give us a shot.
I just want to add one other thing, if I might. We meet every two weeks, the economic development team. We get together every two weeks. Bill sits in on many of those meetings, and we talk about projects that have potential to come here, and we see what is the best way to try and attract them, to get them here. We also make a call every week to Nevada Economic Development, and we stay in touch with all the players around the state there. So we're doing much more now than we have in the past. And I, I know that some of it just doesn't come quick enough for everybody, doesn't come quick enough for me. But nonetheless, we are working towards it, and I think we're making progress.
Well, I definitely agree we're making progress. We've got more companies looking at us, more people knocking on the door. Mr. Balakew is out there doing a pretty good job of trying to recruit. We've had several meetings with Mr. Lacy and Mr. Osborne. And we're looking at different companies. Here in a few weeks, we're going to be going to another city that is right here in Nevada and trying to convince a business that is in, located in that community to relocate to our community. And there's a good possibility that we do that, because teamwork, joint effort, and again, we are working together, as Rick stated.
Your moderator has a question, and that would be, is it the general opinion of both of these boards that our fee structure for starting a new business in Perump is competitive? And can anything be done to make it more competitive? Or perhaps defer and amortize some of the initial startup fees to allow someone to get their foot in the door?
Mr. Moderator, if I might, answer that.
Please do.
We, we are conducting a survey now of what all of our costs are. But I've also asked UICN and VEA to participate in that, because their fees oftentimes are just called impact fees. And they may not call them that. They may or may not, I don't know. But they get lumped in with our fees all the time, and, and they are different ones. So we are doing that study now, and we're going to try and make it a comparison that'll be across the nation, where we can draw this into focus and look at what it costs to build a Walmart, or a Denny's, or something like that in Nye County compared to what it might cost in Mesquite, or Henderson, or Las Vegas, or Chicago, or other places. That's, that's what we're hoping to finish up with, and we've had this a work in progress for some time now. It's not finished, but it's close. We're almost done with it.
Thank you. Would anyone like to jump in there? Dan?
Yeah, we have the, when the impact fees were first brought in, there was a study done to see how they are. But like the county manager just said, when anybody talks about impact fees, they lump everything in there. And if you look at the impact fees for VEA, and particularly Utilities, Inc., they dwarf ours. They dwarf the county fees. Can we do better? I think we can do better, and that's part of what the study is that he's doing. But when you hear that it's fifty thousand dollars to put up a garage in fees, they're not all coming to the county. A great deal of them are going to Utilities, Inc., or Valley's Electric. There's one business I know of that had to put a pole up. It was five thousand dollars to put the pole up. It was fifteen thousand dollars in impact fee. And that was all VEA. It wasn't our fees, so.
What's the solution?
We're working.
What's the solution to make that affordable?
Take them out and shoot them. No, I'm, was that on, was that on, was that on, I'm sorry. No, I, I really, there, what's the solution for it? We've struggled with that with the last DA. The current DA has given us some other, other options to go and that I really couldn't say right now, because then I'm going to get in trouble with open meeting laws.
I don't know that there is a solution, Mr. Moderator, because I think those are regulated industries. The PUC approves the rates for Utilities, Inc., and the county has no control over that.
That's correct on that end, yes.
That is something for us to overcome, then.
Overcome the PUC? I'd love, I'd love to.
Good luck with that.
But, well, Mr. Moderator, there are some facts that come into play too. And I think we're all learning as we go along here. One of the problems we have in our community is, is somebody will try to build on too small a lot. And then the next thing you know, they're coming in asking for a waiver, and then they're asking for something else. And then their business fails, and it's, it's happened many times. How we overcome that one, that's going to be a difficult one, because we, we do have more than a majority of lots that are very, very marginable about putting a business on it. I've seen one after another try to go through the RPC, and the next thing, the next week, they're coming in looking for a waiver for parking and things like that. So good planning on everybody's part would help that. But we need to learn from whatever mistakes have been made in the past and try to build on that and move forward into the future. So I, I think with the committees Rick's working with, there, there's a piece of, of a totally community development center-type thing that other communities have that we lack. We do have an unusual situation here with the town providing some services and the county providing some that are mandated through the NRS, so. But I think if we keep working together closely, that we can overcome a lot of these things and put our personal differences aside and just keep plugging away, and we'll make it better by the day.
Mr. Moderator.
Ward have some comments on that?
Yes. You know, when Heidi Fleiss put her laundromat in, I went and looked at the door. There was a paper on the door, and it said her total fees were about ninety-five hundred dollars. Three-quarters of that was impact fees. I was appalled. Impact fees, in any place I ever lived before, was for undeveloped property. And now you build something new, and of course, you create an impact. But almost ten thousand dollars just to go in where someone already went out and put in a laundromat, just for impact? That, that's, that's the county's mistake.
Those weren't all the county fees.
General Electric put out, I guess, last week that they want to build a... General Electric put out, I guess, last week that they want to build a, a solar plant, a, a panel plant somewheres. Well, that would really be great to ask, offer them something, but what has the county done to offer them? You talk about the PUC problem. Well, that's simple enough, there's a ton of BLM land around here. The county should have obtained some BLM land a long time ago and put in a well, you've got plenty of water rights, and put in your own sewage plant and now you can offer an area that people can manufacture. You know, sometimes in life, we don't have the right answers. You know, we just want to get something done. But there's people out there. The county has spent a fortune of consultants, but frankly, I haven't seen any positive results. But how about hiring a consultant that we can give them all the information? We would like to bring manufacturing and jobs to our community. This is what we got to do with, can you give us some answers? Because I don't think everybody in this town has a long ways to go.
You know, Mr. Culkin, we have spent a lot of money on consultants, you're right. And the town is reaping the benefit of one of those through Beck Environmental at no cost to you.
Yeah, that's a one, that's a really small percentage of our needs. I, 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 last week I took a woman to the hospital and she was told she had two weeks to live. And I've been in her home. She's been here three years. Three years. I went in her home, it's immaculate, she rents a house. I'll tell you what's in that house. A little teeny table in the kitchen that's supposed to have two chairs, but only has one. And a couple of little shelves in the, in the living room for her clothes, which aren't very much. Uh, I, I don't know she has two change outs of clothes. There isn't a bed. She was sleeping on the kitchen tile floor for the last three years. She couldn't afford electricity to pay her bills, so all the vents are closed off. That's our legacy, that a decent human being couldn't find a job in a town of Perump. So let's be leaders. Leaders get things done, politicians make excuses. We know there's problems here. Let's not say, well, we're working on this and we got to do that. Let's, if we don't know the answers, let's get the people that have them and let's bring some jobs. We don't need a few low-paying jobs. I'd love to see a Denny's, it's called a convenience. It's not really a real asset. We need thousands of jobs in this town. Not, ask any business person in this town what the prison did for this town. I've asked everybody. Has your business gone up since they put those hundred and some employees in? No, our business keeps on going down.
So you obviously have a very good idea that you're going to present to us?
I'm not ready to present it, but Mr. Kolbarger, Mr. Balakew and myself will be going to Los Angeles at the end of the month to pursue something I've been wanting to do for many years, but I'm not ready to tell you about it. But when we're ready to move forward, I hope you'll be on board with us.
Good.
Because it will result in thousands of jobs.
And Harley, I'm sorry, Mr. Culkin, that's exactly what it takes. Is each one of us doing what we can and taking advantage of the opportunities that we see in front of us when they present themselves. And I hope you're doing that rather than just wondering who's doing it.
What I'm trying to say is, look, nobody here is stupid. We know for years, businesses have been run out of this town. We know that planning and zoning needs a major overhaul. Not, well, let's look at this little thing. We need to have workshops now, we need to do a major overhaul of the planning and zoning and no more excuses. That's what's keeping business and jobs out of this town.
And that's an old argument, Harley, because that's already been done. That's what we have done.
The discussion is getting a little too far over the top here. We are also out of time on this subject. Time for one more comment.
Yeah, I, I would like to mention the fact that we are woefully short on infrastructure in areas that are zoned for commercial, manufacturing, industry, that sort of thing. And I, I think we need to find a way to work together to establish an area where there is infrastructure or it can be obtained so that there are places for businesses to locate. And I think that's something we could work together on.
And you said on the RPC, so that's a good place to start. Thank you. We'd like to move to the last item. Do we need as a county and town, a way to control dumping within the county and town limits? And how or who would enforce it?
I have a personal experience I can tell you about, if that will help. When I first was elected, I got a group together from the county, from the community and we went out and we cleaned up a dump site that'd been used for about 20 years. I contracted with the Conservation District for a crew so that they could come out and help us. I'm sorry, the Conservation Camp. Conservation Camp came out and helped us with a joint effort with BLM. They helped me pay for that. I had my grandkids out there. I had everyone in the community I could take by the ear and lead them out there. There is a county ordinance that cites the fine for dumping. And I have noticed with the effort that we put in as a community to clean it up first, we have had one bag of garbage show up out there since. And our local law enforcement went and picked it up and they went through it to see if they could find addresses and followed up on it. BLM is willing to help with that, as is the Conservation Camps. And I think if I'm not mistaken, you have one close. Indian Springs is still open? So they're using the Conservation Camp crew there. This isn't a, um, this is not a big issue. This is an easy issue. If you've got someone, someone here from Shea. If you can get some of your community people together to bring what you need in the place at the time and get it done and stand out there yourself and help with it. If nothing else, it's a great PR opportunity. And if people see what you're doing to clean up your backyard, maybe they'll help.
Mr. Mediator, I don't know if it's appropriate for, for me to comment on this subject, seeing how I do work for the Shea Brothers. I recently returned to work full duty after being injured for a number of months and had an opportunity to do what they call auditing routes, which meant that I was on every single road in this town. Not only does the county have ordinances, the town has ordinances, but there are still places on private property, on public property where there are pits of trash. As far as enforcement, I don't know.
I was only speaking about public property. I was not talking about private property.
Well, I'm, I'm not pointing out people's yards, but I mean, if you go behind like an apartment complex and I don't know if it's a property owner's land, but any ravine, I mean, even though the, the property taxes pay for people to be able to dump in the landfill for free because it's paid for through their property taxes, all you have to do is take a trip up to the landfill and you can get rid of as much trash as you want. So it seems to me, you know, it was like pointless that there's these pits of trash throughout the town.
Mr. Darby, I agree with you completely. And the pile that we cleaned up, the area that we cleaned up was probably about a five acre spot. It was less than four miles from the landfill.
We. It's sad and, and when you contact the Shea Brothers and point out an issue, they're, they're Johnny on the spot, they'll be right there with a dumpster and equipment to, to place it there.
That's exactly what our local landfill operator did for us, is he brought, he brought out a rollout. The crews, my grandkids and myself, got together and cleaned it up. When people see that you're taking some pride in what's around you, and it doesn't matter if it's your neighbor's property or if it's the BLM property across the street from you, if it's a mess, set an example. Don't wait for somebody to take care of it for you.
Is this thought to be, is this by either board, is this thought to be a major problem in Perump specifically? And has it improved or deteriorated?
Well, I, I think it makes a difference whether it's your area that's being dumped on or not as to whether it's a major problem or not. I, we have a continual, continual problem i- in our neighborhood. Lorena knows where we live, it's a nice neighborhood. But there's areas where there aren't houses. So people drive off of 160 and dump their, their garbage, their yard debris, especially lots of yard degree, debris right there, uh, next to the road. And I'm getting kind of tired of cleaning it up and cleaning it up doesn't do any good because it comes back again. Uh, I, I don't have an answer for that because all you got to do is take the dump for free, but my house, uh, neighborhood must be closer. Is it a major problem? Not really, but it is, it is a major annoyance.
The other half of the question was, who would enforce it? Who is responsible for enforcing that?
Well, I think, Mr. Moderator, that, that if we ask the citizens to be a neighborhood dump watch committee, I mean, we have neighborhood watches in many communities, and ask the citizens to, when they see somebody dumping trash, to either get their plate number and turn it into Sheriff's Department or appropriate authorities here to handle that, either Fire Department or Sheriff's Department, and let them pass that on. And maybe we go after prosecute some of these folks that they'll think twice of doing it. I see many times that people will, will dump stuff off right outside the entrance to the landfill. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous that they're so willing to do that and they can't drive inside when it's free. So, um, I think maybe just we all could be a little more attentive of that and, and, and try to get some neighborhood watch committees together. And I think if some of these people get a couple of pretty good fines from the judges here, that maybe they'll stop some of the shenanigans that go on.
Me, meanwhile, we can all sign up for Cleanup Day next month.
That too.
That's it.
Anything further on this subject?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to address the first part of the question. It kind of boils down to economics. I'm sure if I go in some of the nicer neighborhoods here, I'm going to see a lesser of a problem of that. And it goes back to bringing the jobs in. Mr. Darby mentioned the dumps free, but you know, it costs money to get to the dump, gas. And gas is getting pretty expensive. I saw a lot of people running to Vegas this weekend, I think they probably couldn't afford gas to drive there. So, uh, you know, a lot of the things that we're all talking about is when we bring financial prosperity to our county and our town, a lot of these things will go away. Virtually everything we discussed tonight was really about a lack of economics. And that's why our focus needs to be on bringing money into this county and the other things will go away.
Mr. Moderator, it's also about pride. And I think that's one of the reasons our Nuclear Waste and Environmental Advisory Board is having Cleanup Day on the 7th of May. That's Perump Cleanup. And that's the citizens taking pride in our community, our total community. We only do it once a year, but again, the Shea Brothers come out and they, they take care of it for us. So again, pride in our community. If we all show pride and have pride in our town, we'll see these things happen. And then along with what everybody else has already talked about, enforcement would be, we can call law enforcement if, if people are dumping. We've got to be able to see them dump. But I think once it's done, you'll see less and less of it.
I, I will tell you that Mr. Balakew goes out and digs through the bags of trash to try to locate the miscreants involved and I can tell you, it's one of his favorite jobs. He's back there laughing.
And Vicki, that's what I was just, I was going to address Tom and say, isn't, isn't that really a code compliance issue? Wouldn't that be something that should be referred to Mr. Balakew as opposed to the Sheriff's Office?
Mr. Moderator, I couldn't think of a better guy to do it. Just give, give him a hand.
You're just jealous because you haven't seen, but you've only heard about his used diaper collection.
We have reached the point of the evening where a general public comment is in order. And at this time, we will have a three-minute time limit for each person who might, from the audience, like to come up and comment on anything you have heard here tonight. We will entertain that at this time. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, just before we leave the, the landfill, I would like to make the comment that it is open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day of the year, except for Christmas, New Years and Thanksgiving. That's the only three days it's closed.
And Mr. Moderator?
How much did they pay you to say that, Mike Holm?
Mr. Rainey?
That's, that's below the belt.
I also like to address one other thing. Mr. Culkin said he had given Mr. Osborne several questions. Actually, the questions came to me, I have them on my desk. I'm trying to get a few of them answered before they go to Mr. Osborne. So they are in the process of going to Mr. Osborne. I just wanted that known, that Mr. Culkin has given them to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah. My name is Bob Irving. Uh, I just got a few comments to make on it. This has been a, a, a good forum. I think that it's, some things have been said here and I think the, the county and the town sort of understand where each other's coming from. I hope they do anyway. Just in a couple of the things that were said down here. First of all, I made this notice to Mrs. Parker at the break that you had. There should not be any worry about any mercury in anything in the root center because the only thing that's got mercury in it was the fluorescent lights. And I'm quite sure they've changed the fluorescent lights out enough to get rid of all the mercury, but mercury is not in fluorescent lights anymore. And the second thing is, is that, I don't know, there's a couple of you here that probably went to school the same time I did. But we had a, a, a school organization and I want to call it that I think it was, it was other the, um, shoot, I can't remember, I had it a while ago. But what we did is we took kids and kids would go and take a certain percentage of the time off during the day, so many days a week from school and go out and work in a community, whether it be a store or a gas station or whatever it was. And, and I think this is something that we, or the boards here, should be able to transport, transfer to the, the, the school district and say, hey, you know, if we can just get these kids out to do some of these deals, even though it may be a cleanup job, but at least they're getting a hands-on in some cases of how to do certain things. You know, and you've got kids, young men, boys around here that would love to have a chance to go into one of these mechanics places and work on a car. And I know that we had places up there where the kids actually went in and they, and the mechanic had a car there and he says, fix it. If you've got problems, tell me what you got and we'll see what we can do. The kid got a hands-on on what was going on. And it was the same thing with girls. They could go into sewing shops or whatever else that the kids, the girls wanted to go into. So it's something that they got their foot, their, their claws into and to understand what was going on in the community and also getting a little bit of job experience and plus getting a little bit of vocational training at, at the same time. And of course, with the college that was brought up here earlier, you know, the college would be nice to go and, and I have to talk to the, to the individuals and say, hey, why can't we put some kind of a training up here for like mechanics or cooking or even fire suppression? Having a fire suppression type, type training school up here in different things that are required by firefighters. Because really, to tell you the truth, the most fire departments in most states now and most counties are required by, if you get hired by them, that within three years, you have to have a Bachelor of Science degree in fire science. So, and if you don't, you're gone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's it? Three minutes? I didn't even get started yet.
You didn't talk faster.
Anybody else have any public comment?
I figured that. Now remember, be nice.
Oh, I'm always nice. I'd be the last person in the world to start anything around here.
That's part of your 30 minutes.
Oh, she didn't got, they haven't got the clock here.
I do now.
No, she already started it.
Walk faster, talk faster.
State your name, please.
Uh, Dave Stevens, Perump citizen. And this is good. I've been trying to get this town board and county together for the last five or six years around here. And you got one county commissioner, he's put his best foot forward more than once here to try to get this butch over here. To try to get this town together. And we got our new one there, he's all right too. All the, all these commissioners are good, every one of them. The town board's pretty good sometime, I, uh.
Oh, come on now.
Well, just, you know, they've got the big head around here. They're all good people. There's no doubt in my mind, there is not a board, a person on the board, town and county, that wouldn't try to get work around here. There's just no money. Al Balakew is one of the best promoters you're going to get in the country here. There's just nothing around this place. And everybody's around here squawking. Jobs, 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 that's all I hear. There's no jobs around here. Denny's, I'd be fine, I'd be a good one. And, and if they got along together like they're doing now, this would be good. This is a good start. But I'd love to argue, jeez, I could have had this thing all settled in about five seconds.
Thank you.
Is my time up?
No.
No?
Oh, I can talk some more, that's it. I know people are looking at me like I don't know anything. I'm the smartest guy in this town.
That's true.
Thank you.
I believe it.
You know, I could tell you where your money's coming from. There's 36,000 people in this town and I donate more money to this town than anybody around here. Me and the other 60% of the senior citizens. And if they didn't get that money out of the senior citizens, this town would blow away. What do they do, they brutalize us. We're getting brutalized here. We're getting brutalized here. Everybody tells me I'm out of order all the time. I could, I was trying to get this cooperation thing going here. You're out of order, you're out of order. While I'm sitting back there. Anyway.
Dave, you're out of order.
Anyway, I think this is good. I didn't mean to get carried away here and all that kind of stuff. I'm not that away really sometime, but I do love to argue. God, I love to argue.
Yep. Thank you.
That's a true statement, too.
Is my time up?
It is now. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you.
Do you have your foot on?
See?
Put on the pedal.
Anybody else wish to have any public comment?
Oh, thank you.
Are you finished?
Well, no, I'd like to talk some more.
You'll borrow my time? You'll borrow my time?
Yeah, we'd like to hear.
It ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
You need a hand? Are you all right?
Hi, Ski Senski. You know, I think this is a great opportunity. It's something, and I agree with everybody here, unless everyone gets on the same sheet of music, then nothing's ever going to happen. I think tonight was very productive. You know, it didn't turn into a big shoddy match, but that's not why I came up here. One of the things that I'm going to ask all of yous help with, there's, you know, we kind of look at the big manufacturings, the big corporations, and this and that. Maybe there's other opportunities. Right now, we're working real close with a group in the movie industry. The movie industry is chomping at the bits to get out of the California area. The problem is, is they're getting so restricted on filming special effects. We just brought a business in here, and I think I talked to Harley about it. This guy is known all over the country for special effects. He's getting a lot of, lot of positive input on the P-R-U-P area because of the desert, the landscape. The meeting that you have where you put all the players in one room, would you also invite the movie industry into that meeting, even though they're not going to build buildings? You know, they're just going to come in, they bring in a lot of people. They bring in a lot of people with money. They use the hotels, they spend money, and that's a tax base. We've already had two or three opportunities. Is Scott Lewis here? You know, I've had two or three things that have come up where they've had opportunities for special effects that need the coordination with Scott Lewis and Tony De Mayo, and it happened that quick. It was one phone call, it was resolved, and the guys are over the moon. So I think that's one of many opportunities that may be, as both a town board and a county commissioners, that you could look kind of out of the box. But I can tell you that you probably want to take consideration of that because there's really, really a lot of conversation going on about that.
Ski?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow, when you get time, get ahold of Rick.
Sure.
And I'm sure that he would welcome your people in the movie industry to talk to his group.
Great, I appreciate it. And I think that's what's going to make it happen, and you hit the nail on the head. You know, and not to bring up the past, but when the ammunition people were here. You know, these guys, they manufactured ammunition for special operations and stuff. That business had to move very, very fast. They had an opportunity for a government contract. To get that government contract, they were a small business competing with some very large businesses. So to get that contract locked in, everything they needed had to happen immediately. Unfortunately, that didn't happen here in Nye County. They went up, I forget the name of the town, it's not important, up in Washington, and that's exactly what they did. When they walked into that room, every key player was there, planning, the fire department.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Ski?
Yes?
Thank you for saving me money this weekend, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Yeah.
Another.
Yeah, what the hell?
State your name, please. Gary Vazicki, resident.
I'd just like to point out that you guys are always focusing, even tonight here, on the big things. And you've got to start focusing on some little things, too. Like, I'm a good example of it. I've been here about five years. I have a brand-new house that's empty because you guys declared it a park. I'm suing the county, I'm trying to settle out of court. I can't speak to people. My anger just came to a head now in the last week because after going after the county for four years, I come to find out there's a fund in the town for parks and, like you're saying, these fees. There's $800,000 sitting in account. While my house is empty and I lost about $75,000 in rents, the town has made 90-something thousand in interest. So you've got to think about, you've got to have a way to deal with smaller issues and to settle things. I tried settling, people ignored my letters, that's why I sued the county. You know, it's not only the big things. This is killing me. You talk about killing things on bigger scales, but you've got to think about the individual residents, too.
Sir, we want to confine the comments, please, to what you heard tonight.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that they're talking about bigger issues.
General public comment, he can make any comment on anything. It's general comment.
I beg your pardon. Please, go ahead.
That's it? Sir?
Okay.
It's the smaller things, though.
Okay, anybody else? And when you state your name, would you spell your last name for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Richard Fenton, F-E-N-T-O-N. I know most of you, and the ones that I don't know, I'm looking forward to interacting with eventually. There are several things that were brought up tonight that I found quite interesting, and I believe that this is a good start to achieving what this town really needs to achieve, and that is to combine our thoughts and our talents and become more aware of our community by sitting down with each other and discussing the challenges that we have in this community. Before I forget, Bob Irving, I believe that was called Junior Achievements.
Junior Achievement.
I come from that era as well, and that's a good point that he brought up. Junior Achievements was a great idea back in the 50s when I was going to school, where the kids came alongside the adults and learned to trade. We don't have that much anymore. We call them workshops, and they were actually taught from ground zero to achieving. They would take a product and become advised by the adults how to take that product from its conception to its final end, which was sales. And that's good for our community, I think, if we could maybe think along those lines as well. But as far as, and I wanted to hit on, if I have enough time, to hit on the cleanup of our community. Our ministry, which is Helping Hands for Jesus, that I'm the founder of, goes out twice a year on most part into the desert east of the Nugget and east of, northeast of the Home Depot, and we do clean those areas. We have brought truckloads, buy the truckloads, to the dump with volunteers. It's all volunteers, and they come out willingly to clean up those areas. We aren't big enough to do the entire town, so, or the county, so we're glad that the town does have a Cleanup Day. I've been here 10 years, and every year we have some sort of a Cleanup Day, and the community gets involved, and I think that's marvelous. That's something that we need to continue. These are just some of the things that the county and the town, with all the differences that we may have, they're not so big that we can't come together with a meeting of the minds and discuss things. And we do have passions about things, and I'm very passionate.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work, guys.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to say this for Mr. Fenton.
Hold on just a minute.
It was just the idea that CWE, Cooperative Work Experience and Career Practicum, that's what they call it today.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to say one thing here while I got a minute, while they're getting, coming up. Commissioner Easley and I, when we were town board members, we always met every three months, all the town boards throughout the county, and we came to consensus on things that we could work on and that we could bring to the Board of County Commissioners. Do you remember that, Tony? And it absolutely worked great. I don't know what happened to it, but you, as town board, Mr. Chairman, you need to start looking into getting that back together. It was a good learning tool. I learned a lot as a town board member. It was how I got to know Joni so well, and with the town manager of Round Mountain, Dan Sweeney, and a lot of other people. But we worked together and we took things that we could get and let the county commissioners know how the town board.
We stole each other's ideas, Gary.
Absolutely, and that's what it's supposed to be. Go ahead, sir. State your name and spell your last name for the record.
Andre Harper, resident. This is the first meeting I've come to that I actually enjoyed because I see two committees coming together and the voice is having a very raised too much. It's been on the edge, but to me, I enjoyed this meeting. But Harley said something. There's a woman living in this town with a chair, one table, sleeping on a kitchen floor. That shouldn't happen. I've made it a habit since I was 36-year-old to fight for the underdog. I'll buy that lady a brand-new mattress, brand-new brocks ring, bedding and all. If anybody wants to come up here and donate a bed frame, anybody got a couch, a chair for this lady, there's no reason that anybody should be living like that. And we can come together and just, you know, just if this lady's willing to accept that help, I'm willing to help this lady. And I'm asking everybody in this room, if you have anything, a lamp, a table, get a hold of Harley. Maybe we can get this lady something decent to live in.
Well, the sad part is, she was a very proud person, and she never asked, and now she has terminal cancer and maybe a couple more weeks to live, so it's too late. The sad part is, the woman just wanted a job in a town that should have had a job for her.
I've got to agree with you, Harley. How's the lady right now?
Dying.
Harley, how is that lady right now?
She's 51 years old.
I know she's 51.
She is concerned. She has a dog and three cats, and she would like to find a nice home for them. So if you're interested in the animals, and they are really nice animals, get ahold of me, and maybe we can do an interview with her.
Would she accept that bet? I know the terminal illness. I went through it for 12 years with my wife.
What's that, the hospice? Nathan Adelson brought a bet over for her.
Oh, okay.
They're fantastic. They provided.
I'm willing to buy anything she needs. I have written checks in this town before. I'm not a rich man.
I'm going to add a little bit more to it. She's South Korean, she married an Air Force guy, and after a short period of time, when she was brought to this country, he abandoned her. And she spent five years studying our history and everything so she could pass the test and become an American citizen. She's so proud of that, and our country failed her.
That's, I've seen this. I traveled this country, going to children's hospitals. Now you see it over and over and over. And when you're seeing it in your own front yard, it's there, and people know about it, and we don't want to help, it's a black mark in our town. But, you know, sometimes you've got to have somebody that's going to kick somebody in the butt and wake them up and say, hey, we've got to get something done. And, you know, if anybody knows anybody in this town right now that needs that bet, I'll buy that bet. And anybody else that wants to help, hey, let's get together and help, not just business, we've got to help each other. And if we're not willing to do that, we're not going to get done, get anything done, period.
Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I did enjoy this meeting.
Is there any more public comment?
Mr. Moderator, if...
Okay, we'll go to item number nine. Oh.
If I can make a comment.
Absolutely.
While somebody's coming up, because other participants have made comments, so I'd just like a moment. Because, you know, we do have a community with a heart. I sit on the Community Outreach Committee that works with a number of community organizations that work very hard to help any individual that needs help. You can't identify everybody. Regretfully, the safety net we have as a nation, as a town, as a county, as a state, is not infallible. There's people that fall through it. But as I know, there are entities out there that work very hard and individuals that work hard. Our youths work hard. They provide a lot of services. So if there's questions about the youth participating, they do. And we have an active tourism and convention council that works hard on bringing tourism here. What we need is small and medium-sized businesses, and I must say that encouraging citizens to come together is what we can all do.
Ms. Murray.
Lorraine Murray, M-U-R-R-A-Y.
Careful on that chair, you're going to land on the floor.
No, I'm good. You can't get too close to these mics. Echoing everybody else's comment, this was a great meeting. I think it's a good idea to see both boards together. There's two things that I heard tonight that I wanted to make a comment on. One was regarding the investment in a community center for P-R-U-P. And I appreciate the fact that the county offered the use of this building, which the town board is now taking advantage of for meetings, but the community center functioned, as Mrs. Sanders be mentioned, for things like dances, receptions, community dinners, plays, and that's really not something that this would accommodate. So I do hope that you continue to look for a facility that will provide that. The community definitely misses it. I'm on numerous organizations, we're constantly scratching to find a place to hold activities. Really miss that center. To the remark that was made about the fact that the county gave $75,000 towards the roof repair and that there's $73,000 still there, I know that some of the funds that came over to the town haven't been spent quickly. And so the remark was, well, you haven't even spent what you got, so, you know, that's kind of like, do that first. But I appreciate Commissioner Easley's comment about the fact that sometimes you have to collect money over time, that you're building towards something, that you're saving those funds towards a larger project. So I know $75,000 wouldn't build us a new community center, so I hope that you don't back away from the funds that might be available for the town to apply for to be able to get that project going, just because the $75,000 hasn't been spent yet. I just kind of heard two different messages. And the second thing is regarding the enforcement on the dumping. In addition to dumping, we do have town ordinances that have to do with abandoned buildings and with weeds on abandoned properties and things like that. And those ordinances have been enforced to the extent that the town can. Unfortunately, there are situations where there's buildings, the windows are broken out, the roofs are caving in. They're not only unsightly, they're dangerous. And the town sends letters to the property owners, incites the fines that we're supposed to have with no response. The next step is to take it to a legal action, and I appreciate you saying that, you know, those people should be prosecuted, there should be fines imposed, and that should happen. But when we take them to the law enforcement, they get turned away. So I hope that the message was heard from this board, that when we've done what we can with our enforcement, it does come to a legal process, that we do have the law enforcement and the courts behind us to make that happen.
Yeah, Lorraine, bringing him forward to the board is a public nuisance.
We have a district attorney now who will probably enforce, uh...
I'm just saying, there have, there have been attempts...
Board's decision on those issues.
There's been attempts to bring some of those things to the, to the law enforcement, and...
There, there is remedy under Nevada revised statutes for, um, public nuisances.
Yeah, just, I mean, personally, there's, there's a house at the end of the block from me that had a fire three years ago, and the roof was already weak, but since then it's caved in, the kids play in there, it's really dangerous.
Sounds like a, sounds like a public nuisance.
I know fines have been tried to be implied, but when they don't pay, the next step is legal, and we haven't been able to move that forward.
Yeah, well, that's the wonderful thing about a public nuisance action. You bring it before the board, we make the determination, uh, um, of course, with the guidance of the district attorney as to whether or not it's a public nuisance, and if we deem it's a public nuisance, we give the property owner a time certain for, to, to clean that up, and if they don't clean it up, we clean it up for them, and we apply the value of the cleanup to their, uh, property tax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you do have...
Any more public comment?
Hi, I, my name is Joan Downey, D-O-W-N-E-Y, and I want to thank you for this meeting, it has been great. I have, I just wanna know, who is code enforcement and zoning answerable to?
At the town level or at the county level?
The building that's on 160.
That's probably...
I'm punting it to you, Bill.
Darryl Lacy, probably, if it has to do with... If it's planning, if it's planning and zoning, then it's probably Darryl Lacy. County.
Mr. Boraski, I know you and I have spoken, and I really appreciate your kindness and help. Do you know? I mean, I'm just, I have spent thousands of dollars, and nobody is answerable to anything. I mean, there's been laws broken, and I mean no one, including assault on me and my husband and granddaughter. I can't get any answers.
I, I have no idea what you're talking about.
You, I'm not specifying the instance.
Is it a county matter or...
It's something that I have to talk to Mr. Kuncy about, and, uh...
Okay.
Unfortunately, uh, when I talked to Joan the other day, um, I didn't, I've not gotten to Brian on that yet, but I will before we leave the building.
Okay.
And there's some issues there that, that involve, uh, county code enforcement. And, um, I'll bring it to Mr. Kuncy's attention and ask him for his guidance on it.
Thank you, and you know that I'm available, I'm willing to do what I need to do, and either way.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
May I make a comment? Just, I'll be very brief. I, I, I just want to say, uh, talking about economic development, and earlier, uh, Mr. Culkin, I, I took your comment, um, about the, the Denny's. You kinda diminished their importance in your comments, and, and I don't think that should happen because whether a company is bringing five jobs here or five hundred, they're all important to me, and I think they should be important to everybody here. And the Denny's is probably gonna bring thirty employees. Well, that's thirty more jobs than we have right now, and I think it's important, and I would just ask you to be cautious about publicly diminishing the importance of a business like that.
My comments are trying to get through to everybody the idea that we don't have enough time to keep trying to bite off a little piece here and there. I'm not diminishing the, uh, the restaurant. What I'm trying to say is, we need to go after far more aggressively something that'll bring in lots of jobs because that's what we've been doing, is nickel-and-diming things, and it hasn't been working. I'm just trying to say, maybe I didn't say it the most eloquent way, but I'm trying to get across that we need to think big, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to item, uh, number nine.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Motion by Mr. Bor, uh, Commissioner Boraski to adjourn, second by Commissioner Shenhopin. Further discussion? Call for the question. How do we do this now?
You got two boards.
All right, you take your, yours. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
[Crosstalk]